Okay, give me one moment, let me turn everything on. Why isn't it showing up on Zoom? Oh, because of Joseph does that.
Joseph turned it on. Joseph just put even one of those. The camera down in the morning.
Hold on.
Wait, not the way it's on there. It's only, um, okay, one second. Well, you know, it's not even almost. The one, sure. Oh, yeah. The idea that she could be. Maybe I'm seeing. It's only one person. I don't think they're in the center. Mm hmm. So it's. It's. And. It's. Mm hmm. Mm hmm.
There's every email.
I don't know.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
This is. On the.
We may have to. And it's.
Yes, Joe. Okay, let me close it out on this one.
I'm trying to get down here. I'm trying to focus. You're late.
Okay. Um. Good evening, uh, the time is now seven ten and I call this meeting to order. The Madera City Council meetings are open to the public. This meeting will also be available for public viewing and participation through Zoom. Members of the public may also observe the live stream meeting on the city's website at www.madera.gov. Slash slash live. Members of the public may comment on agenda items at the meeting remotely through an electronic meeting via phone by dialing six six nine nine zero zero six eight three three. Enter ID eight two eight five two four one five one three seven. Pound comments will also be accepted via email at city council public comment at madera.gov or by regular mail at two oh five West Fourth Street, Madera, California, nine three six three seven. I. City clerk, will you please call rule?
Mayor Garcia is absent. Mayor Prota Mejia?
Here.
Council member Gallegos?
Here.
Council member Rodriguez?
Here.
Council member Montes?
Here.
Council member Evans?
Here.
Council member Vegas?
Here.
Thank you, uh, we will now have an invocation by Councilwoman Evans and followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilmember Rodriguez.
Gracious heavenly Father, thank you for the day. Thank you for allowing us to come in for this special meeting. Thank you for watching over our city and our staff. Thank you for continuing to keep us in your arms, Father God. Continue to cover us with the blood of your son, Jesus Christ, and put a hedge of protection around us. We want to say thank you, we love you, and we ask these blessings in your son's precious name, Christ Jesus, amen.
And our salute flag, ready, salute. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And to the Republic of.
Thank you, Councilwoman Evans, Councilmember Rodriguez. Um. We will now move on to the approval of the agenda. I will ask my colleagues if they have any changes to the agenda.
To approve the, uh, uh, agenda presented.
Second.
Uh. Uh, Councilmember Rodriguez moves to move to approve the agenda as presented, seconded by Councilman Gallegos. All those in favors, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Uh, motion is adopted unanimously. Uh, we will now move on to public comment. The members of the public shall have an opportunity to address the city council regarding matters on this agenda. At the same time, the agenda item is called. Speakers should limit their comments to three minutes. Do we have any public comments?
We have none.
Seeing none, we will move on, uh, to item A consent calendar. And, uh, the first item is A one letter of support for the League of California Cities regarding fentanyl crisis.
Motion to approve consent calendar has filed.
Second.
Yes.
Okay, uh, I would like to open this item for a public comment. Do we have any public comment?
There's no one on Zoom and no one in person.
Seeing no one, we, I will ask for discussion from my colleagues. Or if there's no discussion, a motion.
Motion to approve. Second.
Um, Councilwoman Evans moves to approve, seconded by Councilwoman Gallegos. Uh, all those in favors, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, we will now move on to item B petitions, bids, resolutions, ordinances, and agreements. Item B one, uh, city attorney services, and this is going to be presented by a city manager, Arnold Rodriguez.
Good evening, Mayor Prota, members of the council, Arnold Rodriguez. If you can. Give me a few seconds here to share my screen. The item before council this evening is a request for direction regarding city attorney services. As council recalls from the last meeting, our current city attorney has announced plans for her, um, her retirement. Uh, she had initially indicated that she would be retiring at the end of June. Uh, since then, uh, we've encouraged or coerced her to stay a little bit longer. So she has indicated that she can help us out through, through about the middle part of July. Uh, the principal reason for, um, for staff's request, um, is to provide a sample opportunity to try to recruit either a firm or an individual um, to assist us with city attorney services. Um, what, the city always has the option of bringing in an interim provider. Um, this was something that was done, council may recall, in April of twenty nineteen. Um, where actually we brought then interim city attorney Hilda Montoy, um, to assist us for a brief period as the recruitment process continued. Um, so simply for some context here, th- there, there are three direct reports from, from staff to the city council. Um, the city attorney is one of those reports, uh, the city clerk is the other and, and the city manager. Um, s- city staff, um, sees two potential avenues to retain city attorney services. Now again, there, there's probably different iterations of this and there's probably other, um, there could potentially be other avenues out there. However, these are the two most common practices in local government at the, at least in the state of California. One of those would be to continue to contract for services. That's the current model that the city has. The other could be to revert to in-house staffing model, which the city previously had prior to retaining Hilda, and we will get into both models. Um, I'm going to start off with the contract services model because this is the model that we currently employ. So, um, just for a way of background, the city began this standard practice back in twenty nineteen. Again, it was brought April of twenty nineteen. Under this model, the city attorney is not an employee of the city but does report directly to the city council. The difference is they're a contract attorney versus a city employee where they would be receiving the same benefits that other cities employees have and, or their income or, 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 or their salary would be perceivable. Um, under the current model, it's a contract. The, the attorney, um, submits a bill on, on the number of hours that they work and we remit payment to the attorney and under this model. Services may often be provided by an individual or a firm. Oftentimes there are larger firms. In the current model that we have, Hilda is her own firm. Um, however, Hilda does also rely on, on, on other firms for assistance. Um, so for example, if Hilda, uh, needs assistance, she will oftentimes comment, say, Arnold, is it okay if we retain another firm that has greater expertise or greater knowledge on a subject matter? And, 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 and at Hilda's direction, um, I've agreed every time she has requested that. Oftentimes it's at a cost benefit to the city because if, uh, Hilda has to become a subject matter expert, oftentimes that takes time and she's going to charge us. Um, a couple of the benefits is under a contracted attorney or firm, they provide their own support staff. Um, they provide their own resources. However, there's typically a, a defined scope of work for that. Another example is the city currently uses LCW for personnel. Um, when the city, um, hired Hilda, that was an item that we had discussed with her. If she would be okay with the city retaining LCW, if she was amenable to that. There are some other firms hypothetically that could come in and say, no, we want to provide all services or no services. So that's just something to kind of keep in the back of your mind as we're going through this process. And again, the city would be based on an agreed upon schedule. Typically it's hourly, however, I have seen other firms what they'll do is they'll ask for a monthly retainer of X amount of dollars and they'll give you so many hours and anything above that will charge you, or there's different models. The current model that we have today is Hilda only bills for the time that she provides services. We do not have a retainer, there is no monthly basement fee or anything like that. It's just, if Hilda works twenty hours for us, she bills us for twenty hours. She works eighty, she'll bill us for eighty. Um, it's a model that I, I, I think is better, i- it's, it's very beneficial to the city. Or favors the city, I should say. Um, if, if, uh, council seeks to continue this approach, uh, we believe it would take approximately four weeks to prepare um, an RFP, a request for proposal that would be published. We, we would reach out to firms who specialize in local government legal services. There are a couple of locals, um, however, there's not a lot. We probably would have to, uh, reach out to other firms outside of the area such as Sacramento or Southern California. Sometimes those firms will charge for travel, sometimes they don't, it very depends on the firm. Um, at that point, um, w- um, the proposals would be screened for responsiveness and then all proposals would be presented to city council. Um, so we would simply screen them, but at the end of the day, the city council would, would receive all of them. If we were to receive three, if we would receive fifteen. Um, and then at that point, city's council would direct staff with which attorney or firms, they would invite for in-person interviews. I suspect the interviews would occur on a weekend, um, simply because of schedules and timing is not really on the city's side on this one because we don't have a tremendous amount of time to recruit a firm or an agency and trying to manage schedules could be, um, challenging. Um, so again, so the city council, under this approach, would interview firms and provide staff direction regarding, um, the council's choice. Um, city staff could complete reference checks and then we would provide those reference checks directly to the city council. And then city council would provide staff with direction on negotiating terms of conditions. Obviously, city council can also negotiate that, but oftentimes in terms of timingliness, uh, i- it could just be that council directs staff with some parameters and then we would negotiate directly. And then we would agendize that, um, before city council meeting in public during a meeting. The, the other model is in this, um, it would be an in-house attorney model. There are some surrounding communities that have, and they have, um, and that, um, and they do employ this model. Memory service, me, city of Fresno, um, city of Merced. Um, so prior to twenty nineteen, the city employed this model. Historically, um, so in twenty nineteen, the city had one in-house attorney and one paralegal. However, prior to, to the city attorney, historically, the city did have two city attorneys. And I don't know if it was a paralegal or, or legal clerk, I'm, I'm not positive on the exact staffing. Um, under this model, the city attorneys and I will employ very similar to the city manager and the city clerk. And the city attorney would report directly to the city council. Historically, when there was multiple city attorneys, you had one lead city attorney and then you would have, um, attorneys underneath that attorney. Those attorneys would report to the, to the city attorney and not to the council. And then if there was any support staff, those would be civil service positions. So for example, if it was a, a law clerk or paralegal and they would be represented. Um, so, so the process for this, um, there's a couple of different, um, potential options for this one. Um. Me. So the council could direct staff to, to retain a recruitment firm that specializes in hiring city attorneys. Um, another one could be that we could, to open it up, just like we would any other recruitment for any other position. I think one of the challenges i- is that this is a highly specialized field. And, um, coun- council may want to consider hiring a recruitment firm. An example of a recruitment firm is the firm that we just recently used to, to, to recruit a finance director and a public works director. Again, it's not mandatory, but that's one potential option. And then council would work directly with staff or the firm to identify potential applicants and, and through the process, but again, that's, that's at the discretion of council. Um, the salary, if it was a, a city attorney, an in-house city attorney, this would be a regular staff person, just like in any other staff person. So their, their, their salary would be perceivable, health benefits would all be considered. And then council would also have to establish a salary range, just like you would any other employee. And then that, that would happen prior to making an offer and, and that would have to come before council and it would have to be established in the, in the salary schedule. Um, and then the city attorney recruitment would traditionally be scheduled, just like any other position for thirty days. However, council could say we want it less or more, but traditionally it's thirty days. And then all candidates would be screened and they would all be interviewed by council. Or actually, uh, I'm saying all would be interviewed, it would be up to the council with, with how many you would want to interview. Um, so if it's a number, it, it, you know, it's solely at the discretion of council. Um, so again, council would also have to interview those people in person, would be staff's recommendation. Um, more than likely, that would also happen on a weekend, um, or after kind of five PM probably. And then, um, city staff's involvement at that point would be to complete the background, criminal history, pre-employment, physical and a drug screen, just like we do any other employees, myself included. Um, and at that point, the council would negotiate those terms and conditions of employment with the final candidate, consistent with the published salary schedule. So you would set that salary schedule first and then you would do the recruitment. Um, and then you would have a range of salary versus negotiating and then setting it. So it's, um, so the first step would be to, to, to set the salary schedule. Um, and then at that point, an employment agreement would be negotiated. We do have standardized, and I'm saying we, the city has standardized agreements with, with, with the city manager and department heads. Um, obviously, city council can deviate from that. But, but, um, one thing that we've attempted to do since, uh, in the past couple of years is council has been very clear on standardizing a lot of the agreements. So there's no variation in those agreements. Um, and then, um, that, that contract would be scheduled before the city council during a public meeting. So under both scenarios, th- they would both come back to city council for direction during a public meeting. One, uh, one other item to consider is if, um, if council does decide on an in-house attorney, um, one thing that should also be considered on the front end is, is support staff and that could be a paralegal, um, or that could be, um, a law clerk, um, or any combination thereof. Um, and then additionally, a few other items that would have to be discussed is, um, we would have to evaluate office space furniture, equipment needs, um, laptops. Um, any, any, um, any organizations, um, any access to any programs for, for law services and those types of things. So y- you have, you have your hard cost, uh, in terms of staffing, um, uh, house, health insurance, but then you also have your added costs that come with it. Um, there, there is currently, uh, a couple of vacant offices that we have held that formerly housed the city attorney. Those offices are currently vacant. Um. If, if council directs to go to an outside firm, um, um, come, my plan would be to use those offices for existing city staff. Um, however, we have left them vacant because there is still legal documents on those, um, to offices. And it's simply been a, um, um, a timing issue for us, but, but there are vacant offices, they're here in city hall. It's the former, or it's the old police chief's office. And, and so they're kind of down in the finance department. And and so they're kind down in the finance department. So i- if council would propose to go to the in-house model, staff would recommend that that we would probably have to publish an RFP for interim contract services. The reason for that is the in-house model to recruit that would probably take a little bit longer. Because we would have to establish the salaries and that to to hire an employee usually takes longer than it does to hire a firm. And so because of the timing with Hilda's separation coming up here shortly, we're not confident we would have adequate time. Even if we go with a contract, we may potentially have to bring on an interim for a very brief period, but we're trying to minimize that. Because then that creates, there's learning curves and and it takes time to try to coordinate those things. However, we're fairly confident that it would that if we do go to the in-house attorney model, we would probably have to do an interim. Consider the attorney just as a bridge and and I can't speculate with how much time that's going to be because if that attorney currently has a job. And if in their contract, it stipulates they have to give 60-day notice, well, there are 60 days right there. And and it usually for professional services, contracts typically state that they have to give a longer period for a time of separation. So the next step, so this evening, we we are we are seeking direction from council to either seek contract city services or an in-house. And then based on council's direction this evening, a few other things to identify. For example, doing our either an RFP for an in-house or if you're going to suggest if if council does recommend that we go and we hire an in-house person or a firm, do do we bring in an RFP or an outside recruiting firm to assist us in the process? So I know I just threw a lot at you, I was trying to provide a couple of different scenarios. And I was I was trying to walk through a couple of different options. So with that being said, that concludes my presentation. Now we'll turn it back over to Mayor Proton.
Thank you, Arnoldo. Melissa, do we have any members of the public wishing to speak on this item?
We do not, there's no written public comment and no one on Zoom.
Thank you, I will now close public comment and I will ask for discussion from my colleagues. We have a question by Councilman Rodriguez.
Thank you. Arnoldo, when we brought down Hilda, what what process that we used to try, did we use the a consultant to to recruit? Or did we have that just as a in-house? Recall, I think you may have mentioned that, did we?
You know, thank you very much for for the question, Councilmember Rodriguez. So this is going to sound long-winded and I'm not trying to bore council with the details, but at the time of separation, we went a couple of days without a city attorney. I I came to city council and city council instructed me to 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 spend a a maximum of $50,000 to to hire an interim city attorney. I I don't want to call it on an emergency basis, but that's what it felt like at the time. And I had reached out, I did a 10-day RFP. And I solicited attorneys. And Hilda was one of those attorneys that that I had reached out to to gauge her interest. At that point, at day, it was around day 11, I interviewed the the firms or the individuals that applied. But everyone understood that it was a maximum of $50,000, so it was a very short-term agreement. I I council had delegated the authority to me at that point, I I hired Hilda, knowing that it was a maximum of $50,000. At that point, council, I came back to council and council said, we want you to go with both processes. One was to hire, to open up a recruitment for a city attorney and in-house city attorney. And at the same time, to start a recruitment for a firm, city staff did both of them. And at that point, we we received both applicants for an in-house city attorney. And we also received applications or responses to our RFP for contract services. Hilda responded as a contract attorney, not as an in-house attorney. And then it was a Saturday morning and if memory serves me, I believe council interviewed two potential in-house attorneys. And two or three contract attorneys, and don't quote me on the number, I'm kind of going off memory here. And after that Saturday, council decided on on selecting Hilda. And then that item came back before city council and the city council hired Hilda. So city council made the decision to hire Hilda over going the in-house attorneys or over other firms. And at that point, Hilda had set her rates within the response to the RFP. And the council agreed to those rates and then that was approved in open session. So hopefully I explained it correctly.
Yeah, thank you, Arnoldo. And the process that we use, you're saying we use a two-process deal here, one was the we did it internally and we hired a recruit order to do that as well, or did we do all that process internally?
And we did the entire process internally and Wendy took the lead. And and then I took the lead on reaching out to different companies that I could identify that I thought would be interested.
So I know the direction today is to find out if if it's best for us to have a recruitment agency help us with that or if or if we want to do that in-house like we did last time, correct?
Yes, that's one option. And then the second being, if council would want to have an in-house attorney or a contract attorney, because that's probably going to die, probably guided the direction. If if council were to say that we prefer to hire a contract, I feel that city staff could probably do that, however, we would not be opposed to bringing on a recruiter. Because that obviously makes it a little bit easier for staff, knowing it's going to cost us money. But 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 we're open to either one. Sometimes when you hire a firm to assist you, they know what firms are off there. And sometimes that's helpful.
Yeah, and I'll say to, on my experience with the working with the city here and and other government is that when you have a contract service, you have a realm of services that certainly benefit whatever organization you're dealing with, right? If it's a school, then you work with ETCO, if you're dealing with city, then you're working with city, municipal law and everything else that goes with it, right? So Lever Cassidy, for example, HR, they're specific on certain things, but they also branch out and do different things. So I like the idea of a contract because I think they can encompass a lot more than in-house attorney would. And I think one of the things that we had with our previous attorney, I know that they overlooked a lot of the contracts, agreements, but they were limited. And beyond that, then you had to go and seek out additional services. But again, we were carrying the note, obviously, that I mean, the 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 pay salary for all of the, I'm not sure if there was three, it was a three personnel team. Yeah, there was the attorney and I think he had like a paralegal or something, right? Yeah, but all with that, I think that was one of the big issues that we faced during that time. We're talking about salaries and what have you, right? That that was another of the issues that we have. So I think here we have more control of that, I think, as as we familiar familiarize ourselves with how the process works with attorneys, kind of with Tilda. Obviously, you and your staff know when to use the attorney, when not to. But I think we 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 have, it's basically built on ours. Right, not so much ongoing without really having anything to do. So I like the idea with the contract services and it's something that we can do again, bring them back and interview them in the same fashion that we did with Tilda and the rest of the people that applied. I think that would give us at least a good pool of candidates that's out there. And if we don't see what we like within that pool, then we can go out to a internal, I mean, an in-house attorney and maybe use a recruiting recruiting firm to help us with that, at least that's my opinion.
Thank you, Councilman Rodriguez, next is Councilwoman Vales.
Thank you, Mayor Proton, here, Councilman Rodriguez took everything that I was going to say. He just checked off all the boxes, so thank you for that. I do agree with everything he had to say about going out and getting a contract attorney. I do feel that Wendy has a lot on her plate and so do you. We have some new employees who are trying to be on board, so I'm not against getting a a contracted firm to help us with this recruitment at all. I think that would be the better buck for our bank, bank for our buck, thank you. Because right now they know who to go and solicit to bring them here for us to interview and choose who's the best fit for us here in the city of Madera.
That's all, Mayor Proton. Thank you, Councilwoman Vales, Councilwoman Montes.
Yeah, so I do, I do agree to a certain degree with my colleagues. But I think we've had a really good experience with a contract attorney because it was Hilda. And that might necessarily be the case with with someone else, I I don't, I don't know, right? I think she did a a very good job and we were very lucky to have her as a contract attorney. And I'm not opposed to saying, hey, you know, let's go get another contract attorney. But what would it look like? I mean, you don't want to discourage people from applying, right? We we asked for a contract attorney, but at the same time, just kind of like last time, we do a recruitment for an in-house, just to kind of see what's out there. I know it's going to cost money. But you know, just to kind of, you know, evaluate all of our options. Because there might be somebody says, hey, no, I I don't want to do contract, maybe I just want to come and work for you guys. But I, again, I'm not opposed to having a contract. But again, I think we've been very lucky that we had Hilda. You know, that she came in initially as the kind of the emergency or interim and then she chose to apply. But and I would also agree that using a firm to do all the recruitments would be ideal so that we can get people that, and again, you know, they specialize in this, this is what they do all day, it'll be faster, yeah. It'll cost us more money, but you know, I think in the end, you, there's value there by spending a little bit of money rather than, you know, because Hilda, I mean, what what was the timeframe, June 30?
It was initially June 30, I think, right now, she indicated about the middle of July. And I think while Hilda's expressed an openness to assist us, I don't think she wants to be the on special projects, I don't believe she wants to be the city attorney past the middle of July.
So we have about six to eight weeks.
Approximately, okay, yeah.
All right, well, I don't know, I guess, I guess it's just a question, I I mean, to you that would that look like, would that discourage people if we say, hey, we want, we want a contract attorney? Basically, I don't want to say into perpetuity, but this is what we're looking for. But if at the same time, we're looking for an in an in-house or after evaluation period, we we find that, hey, we're not getting the same level of service. I guess will we just initiate that during council reports like, hey? I mean, because that's going to be kind of difficult to to do, right? Like, hey, I don't like the attorney that we have. Yeah, and that's going to have to be done in in open session, right?
Right, council could always, always put a disclaimer on a contract and simply state that this is for X amount of time. Right, so for example, council could say that this contract will be reviewed annually or every two years or three years or something along those lines. Very comparable to a city attorney contract or a city clerk contract. And then it it could be, it could be discussed annually, it could be discussed every X amount of time. And then at that point, council could decide that either they're pleased with, come with the legal services that are being rendered or council could elect to go in a different direction. That other direction could be, could could be tuition RFP for for a new contract. While while those discussions are 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 not the most comfortable at times. At the same time, legal services are extremely expensive. And one thing that this council has shown historically as is that it's that it's very prudent when it comes to city finances.
All right, well, then I I think I'll follow my colleagues going with a contract attorney using a firm to do the recruitment. But I think I'll also add, at least at this point, giving you discretion to for that $50,000 again, just in case if it does go a little bit beyond, you have discretion without having to come back to council and asking for essentially the money to to do something interim for the $50,000. That would, I mean, just so that we're not having to continue to come back, because yeah, I mean, eight weeks, I feel like it sounds like a long time, but that's going to go by quick, especially when, you know, you're trying to schedule coordinates, our schedules to do some interviews and stuff like that, you know, it's it's going to be difficult. And I and I would say, I mean, at least on my part, if if that's something that it makes it a little bit easier, maybe to to dedicate a day during the week, you know, that's something that I'm, you know, willing and able to do. Obviously, I can't, I don't know if I could take like a whole week off, but you know, if we can kind of schedule some things or even if we can do some remote stuff, that might work for the interviews.
Thank you, Councilwoman Montes, Councilwoman Evans.
Yes, in reference to both, if we had an in-house, as you said, we would end up having to do the give a salary, we would also have to make sure we took care of their in their insurance. Correct, everything that a normal employee would do versus having a contract where they would get paid per hour per whatever sessions that they did. So in reference to that way, the diff, the two different, for me, going with the contract would be much more feasible for us since we tried to squeeze every dollar that we can in reference to the city as opposed to going to all the extra and bringing them in, giving them a paralegal. And just basically giving them a staff as opposed to a contract, you're having one person versus an in-house where you would have to have, you know, two to three people. So now you're looking at more money having to be spent in reference to the city and coming from the city. So for me, I'm I'm inclined with my colleagues to go with the contract. Also, the recruitment firm, I think, as well, would be something that would be, you know, great for us to use, I couldn't find another word, but anyway, I think that would be something that would be very good for us to use. Because as Councilmember Jose Rodriguez said, that they would be able to define the things that, you know, we were looking for, you know, be able to table and go directly to that versus having, you know, a number of different areas and not being able to just solidify this one particular area. And that would be the city government where other people may be looking to other different things and not necessarily know exactly what it is that we need and what it is that we do. So recruitment firm would be able to table it and be able to find just what we're looking for in reference to our city and tabling it to to us and to be able to do the things that we need to do. So I'll jump on the bandwagon with everybody else and I'm for the recruitment firm and I'm also for the the contract, so.
Okay, and Councilmember Evans, would that also include an emergency?
Yes.
Correct, the $50,000 bridge only to be used if it's absolutely needed?
Yes, yes, for me, yes.
Thank you, Councilwoman Evans, Councilmember Vales.
Ah, yeah, thank you, Mayor Proton. Arnoldo, I just want to ask you, out of this, these three services, which one can, which one can cost more to the city?
It's 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 a little difficult to speculate and I'm going to go off the top of my head here a little bit, which I know is always dangerous. If memory serves me, back in 2018, when the city had an in-house city attorney and a paralegal, the budget for that department was $424,000 per year, if I recall. Since we've had Hilda, that cost has gone down, even though inflation has caused everything to go up. Going back to something Councilmember Montes said earlier, though, I do think we've been very fortunate to have Hilda and that Hilda doesn't always charge us for everything. Sometimes we'll call her and and a lot of firms will charge you for every seven minutes or for every phone call. Hilda, I I know this from experience, Hilda doesn't charge us for everything. And so we've been very fortunate. The other thing too, that's not always captured or reflected is if you have a city, it's sometimes we have firms that will assist us, for example, Lever Cassidy, Wimmore will help us out with personnel. We try to capturing that in our reports to to council at least once a month. Or as soon as billing comes in, sometimes it's every six weeks, sometimes it's every month when we have our our council reports, we try to capture all of that, so council is very well aware of what we're spending. It seems to me that that going with a contract is costs less, however, I think when we go to a new attorney, I I'm going to speculate that it's going to go, that the price will increase. And I say that because again, I think Hilda has set her rates extremely low, she has not raised her rate since I've been here. She has not requested to raise her rates. I I would suspect other firms would have probably requested an increase over the past couple of years due to inflation. And and Hilda does not always charge us for every call. With that being said, I think it's going to be, I think city staff is going to have to be a little more thoughtful in terms of when we reach out to legal counsel. Because again, I think we have been fortunate and to be candid somewhat spoiled and and then now we all, a lot of city staff just picks up the phone and calls Hilda. And I think as we move forward, we're we're going to have to we're going to have to give that some additional thought to make sure that, do we really need to reach out to our legal counsel and how much is it going to cost? And so I think it's a combination of things. I'd like to think, based on my I'd like to think based on my experience since I've been here, it seems like going to contract may come out uh, slightly, uh, more advantageous for the city cost-wise.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, um, Councilmember Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor Protim. So, um, just to kind of highlight on what you just touched on. You have to remember that four years since, uh, we've had, I think, Hilda, right? It's been correct. So if we had, we had the, uh, in-house attorney, the additional costs, employer contributions, benefits increase. Uh, I don't know if there's any cost of living increases, but I mean, you're probably looking at uh, somewhere in the ballpark of maybe over five hundred thousand, I think by now, if not more. So that was kind of like where we're at today, right? Talking about inflation.
Correct.
Um, but if you needed to quantify the value or money of what, uh, we're gonna be doing with this contract service, what would you say that amount would be? Just to try to speed up time so that we can have somebody in line for, uh, Hilda's departure. Do we have an amount of, uh, uh, how much we have to pay this service to try to get this done for us? Because if the amount is over a certain amount, I mean, we can still contract services outside of Hilda to provide us with, uh, guidance in any of the, uh, legal matters that we need without really having to, like, try to meet a deadline. Think, you know, we, we can take time to get this thing done. I know we need an attorney. But like you said, we have either Libra Cassidy or we have other services that we can reach out to, provide us to legal services we need. And I'm sure Hilda can probably refer someone. I'm not sure if she's extended that to us. But, uh, I'm sure that there would be, uh, uh, legal services that we can contract. My, my deal is, I don't know what the value that you're putting on that. If you can quantify that in money and dollars, what would that be? To try to get that recruiting services to help us. Is that fifty thousand, a hundred thousand, twenty thousand?
No, so the recruiting services would be considerably less. So we, we would issue an RFP and we would work with the recruiter. The, the recruiter that we just, uh, we did conduct an RFP, so we published an RFP. The recruiter we hired charges twenty-five thousand dollars for the finance director and twenty-five thousand dollars for the public works director. When the responses came back, all, every, every one of them was roughly that price, was between twenty, twenty-four, twenty-five thousand up to thirty thousand. So the recruiter's probably not a large, a large fee in all of this. And the recruiter, if we're gonna do an RFP, um, I think the recruiter is probably gonna come in a plane in screening. And then if anyone asks questions, they can reach out to the recruiter directly. I don't think the recruiter is a big expense in this at all. I, I think that's gonna be a nominal cost. So the RFP, we do have an RFP that we will try to publish as soon as possible. And then at that point, it, it's gonna be our job in the recruiter to identify potential firms that would be interested. And again, there, there are a lot of firms in California. The challenge will be identifying a firm that's not necessarily nearby with Zoom. But for some reason, it seems helpful that when they're here in person for meetings. And that just seems like, uh, and that would be council's preference, even though I'm not confident that that's the case. Um, I think the, the other item is gonna be, is if council delegates some authority for me to hire an attorney as a bridge attorney, I'll call it. So for example, uh, so L C W assisted us running the meetings last time for, for two meetings, if I recall. That was primarily to, 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 uh, to ensure compliance with the Brown Act. L C W, um, they're, they're great attorneys, but, but they don't necessarily have expertise, as I understand correctly. Or like the subdivision map act for California environmental equality act. And I think that's where a firm, um, that has those technical expertise. This, this process will, is gonna be able to identify, come one of those firms that has broader knowledge of just government affairs in general versus personnel or HR. Um, but I think the recruiter is not gonna be a large expense whatsoever. I, I think it's gonna be a nominal cost. Like I said, we spent fifty thousand dollars for, for recruiter for, for two positions, for two key positions in the city. So I don't think that's a large expense.
Yeah. Oh, well, I mean, it's, it's not a large expense in the sense that when you look at our budget, of course, but twenty-five thousand dollars is twenty-five thousand. I know that we need to have an attorney and, and I'm not trying to sound tight or cheap or anything like that, but I mean, twenty-five thousand dollars. And if we have the ability to be able to, uh, promote or advertise and be able to find a list of candidates, I'm, I'm sure like you said, there's gonna be questions and that could tie up, uh, HR, tie up, uh, um, our staff into something else. But, um, I'm always just wanting to find out if there was any, um, alternative to that. But because it seems like right now, from what I'm hearing is that, yes, she's leaving July, mid-July, we need an attorney ASAP.
Right. Ideally, we will have an attorney simply because issues do come up. However, um, if council directs staff to, 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 to hire or to seek an RFP for a consulting firm or contract attorney, I think the, um, um, while the recruiter would help, I don't think it's as important versus an in-house attorney. I think if we were gonna, if the council was gonna drag staff to go to in-house attorney, I would say we absolutely one hundred percent need a recruiter. However, if council says, well, can let's go contract, but let's try to do it on our own and issue an RFP. And, you know, something kind that we can definitely try. And, and if we go out and if we don't get great responses, we can always go back out and then hire a recruiter. And that's not to come for me to back up, but, but again, if it was gonna be in-house, I'd say absolutely, that's our recruiter. Because you almost have to do target, target, uh, recruiting. Um, however, with the firm, we can always try our best to try to reach out. However, council can also direct staff to say, hey, try it. And if it's not working out, go back out. Or we can always come back to council and say, hey, council, we have X amount of applicants, uh, or responders. How do you feel about this? You can review those and, and then we can pivot at that point. Um, the only thing though is once you issue an RFP, that RFP, we do have to come to council and either council has to reject them or, or move forward with one of them. And, and I say that because that's something that we did very recently with the response to concrete work in the city. Uh, the lower, we had one responder and it was significantly higher than we had budgeted. So we brought the item to council, council rejected it and city staff is now doing the work. And so once you issue an RFP, um, you do have to do something with the RFP. You can't just let it sit there and grow stale and act as though you didn't issue it. You do have to take formal action.
Yeah. So from, I understand you correctly right now, only if we have an in-house attorney, we would then seek for the, uh, um, recruiting services. Um, would anyone be opposed to letting you just kind of go out and do for the contract services? I think from what I heard, at least the majority of us here suggested to do contract. Yeah. But I mean, I, I guess, and the question that I have that's gonna, you know, I really, if you can give me a good answer, then I'll, they'll determine whether or not, you know, maybe it is worth spending the twenty-five thousand is. Are the skies falling when we don't have that attorney on July, um, at fifteenth, for example?
No, I don't think the sky's falling. If we have the opportunity to hire an interim city attorney, in case of an emergency, I would say the sky's not falling.
And you have the authority to do that.
And I would have the authority. You're absolutely right.
So, I mean, I don't know, would it behoove us to at least, uh, explore the contracted? And if we don't see anything that's potential there?
Absolutely.
And I'm, I'm saying that, I know, you said twenty-five thousand dollars is not the biggest expense. I get that, cause even in the interim, I think this, this interim can extend it and cost us more money for not having someone that's qualified. But I think we'll know what's out there once you, once you throw the hook out there, right?
Absolutely correct, Councilmember. Right. So if council's direction this evening wa- was to issue an, uh, an RFP and have city staff do that, I, I feel comfortable with that. Um, if council were to say, go recruit someone for an in-house, I, I, I would score him a little bit. Uh, without a recruiter, just because I think that position's difficult to recruit. But firms are a little bit easier because we would, um, there's Google and, and, and you can find a lot of stuff on the internet. And the other thing is you can reach out to other cities to find out what they're doing. And that's, that's the easiest way for this process to work.
I, I agree with, uh, Councilmember Rodriguez. That would be the route that I would support.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I'm done. Thank you. Thank you.
I will now ask for a motion.
You need, you need a motion?
Yeah.
You need a motion or just direction?
I think direction and I'll try to capture it. If that's okay, it's to, um, issue an RFP for a contract city attorney. And if absolutely necessary, uh, go up to the city manager spending limit, which is sixty thousand dollars. Back then it was fifty thousand dollars to hire a bridge attorney. Uh, if we're not successful in bringing someone on, uh, prior to Hilda separating.
And then currently you're not using a recruiting firm, but if you.
Absolutely have to. I can come back to council. Okay. Fair enough.
Yeah, sure.
I'll, I'll come back to, okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much, council.
With that, I will.
It's simply a direction. I, I think it would be appropriate, maybe if we do a thumbs up, just historically, that's how we've done it. And so for the record, it looks like, um, six councilmembers said yes with, with Mayor Garcia being out.
Thank you.
It's rock and roll.
I will now adjourn this meeting at seven fifty-eight and I want to thank everyone for participating tonight. The next meeting is on Wednesday, June, Wednesday, May seventeen at six P M.